Welcome to the meeting of the Danvers Planning Board for January 28. Looking at the agenda, we're going to start with continued public hearings and we're going to start with 26 Hobart Street.
Is that phones? Getting some audience feedback.
You are?
Did it shut off our phones?
Is there a problem with the phone?
It's very disturbing and disrespectful to the other people here because I heard it was a telephone signal while someone was...
Well, someone had their phone on you. Just out of courtesy, if we could all just put our phones on silent. I didn't hear it, I apologize. Mr. Grassby has better hearing than I do.
We sat back there because I thought you were going to speak back there.
Okay. No problem. Go right ahead.
Good evening, my name is Katie Cruz. I am a civil engineer with Hancock Associates in Neighbors. I am here to present the Cherry Street Fish Market project on 20th Street, 36 Hobart Street. Last time we were here, we received comments from the board about adding landscaping to the property and since then, we have revised plans to include more landscaping improvements.
Please.
Really, as you know, the project property is small, it's about a third of an acre, and it's this portion of the site. And then adjacent to it, there is an easement that is for access and landscaping and parking, which is this kind of L-shaped area here. So we proposed landscaping improvements both on the site and the business. On-site, as the board requested, we are adding a row of arborvitae here, which will be adjacent to the neighbor's eight-foot fence. There will have to be some decorative grasses planted in there as well. That will be tall, like arborvitae, to screen that area back here. That'll be about a five-foot strip. We've also added screening for dumpster enclosure, which will be a wooded stockade fence, and we've added a series of arborvitae here as well. In the front, we have two red maples proposed and also some decorative grasses. And then we've expanded the landscaping area here in between the addition and the existing building. So in total, we'll be adding 16 arborvitae, 22 decorative grasses, and two red maples. We'll be increasing the landscaping area from the previous design by about eight foot. So that's a portion of the project.
Do you have that in a percentage?
Yep. So in the existing addition, there's not very much landscaping at all on the site, about 3 percent, and we're upping that to about 10 percent.
So it increases 7 percent more. Okay.
And then off-site, Mr. Parker, who's the owner, he maintains all of the landscaping areas within the easement here, which includes a 16-inch tree that's surrounded by hostas and then the eastern landscaping areas on either side of the municipal lot, the landscaped area in the middle. And he is proposing some improvements to those landscaped areas as well. He will be adding a series of decorative grasses in between the two parking areas, which I know was a request of the board to screen between those two, and widening that landscaping area by about a foot and a half. He'll be cleaning up this area and installing a perennial garden in this corner with some flowering bulbs, that sort of thing. At this corner here, he'll be cleaning that up as well, planting a cherry tree and a perennial garden around that. And then in this triangle area over here, it's wooded, but it's overgrown, so he's proposing to clean that up and also maybe add some new plantings in there such as persimpias or like that. He also, I know the board mentioned planters, and he has a series of hanging plants that they do every summer, that they will continue to do. So for the combined project area and the easement area, the landscape portion of it will increase from 25 percent to 30 percent with about 1,000 square feet of additional landscaping.
Great. Excellent. I'm going to bring it out to, unless you have more to discuss, I'm going to put it out to the board now. John?
No, just happy to see them making the accommodations we asked for.
Charles?
Nothing.
Nathaniel?
Oh, it sounds really good.
Peg?
No, it looks fine. Everything we've asked for, you've put in.
Jim?
Yeah, I feel the same way. That's great. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I feel the same as the rest of the board. Thank you for making those accommodations. I know not all of the land is yours, it's easements from the board, from the town, but I think it's great that you're beautifying the area even though it's easements from the town at the same time. I think it's fantastic. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up to the audience. Does anyone have any comments, questions regarding the applicant or 26 Hobart Street in general? No. Nothing from the audience. Bringing it back to the board, unless there's no further conversation, I'm looking to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing for 26 Hobart Street.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And do we have a... Oh, thank you. John?
To the town clerk, this is to certify that a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on January 28, 2020, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted. We, the Danvers Planning Board, have been requested under Section 4 of the zoning bylaws to approve a site plan submitted by Darrell Parker for property located at 26 Hobart Street, assessor map 43 lot 40B, in the commercial 1A Zone District. To add a two-story addition to the existing Cherry Street Fish Market is shown on the following plans. Plan permit, site plan, 26 Hobart Street, map 43 lot 40B. Danvers, Mass., prepared for Darrell Parker, prepared by Hancock Associates, 185 Center Street. Danvers, Mass., consistent of seven sheets dated December 10, 2019, and revised on January 27, 2020. Sheets 1 through 8, title sheet, existing condition plan, site plan, a site preparation and erosion control plan, layout and materials plan, grading and utilities plan, landscaping plan, site details, light layout. Plan addition and renovation, Cherry Street Fish Market, 26 Hobart Street, Danvers, Mass., prepared by Ginep Architects, 20 Conutt Street, Danvers, Mass. The plan consists of three sheets dated May 11, 2018, revised through August 2, 2018. Sheets 1 through 5, existing condition plan, construction plan, second-floor construction plan, exterior elevation. Supplement documents, stormwater calculations, 26 Hobart Street, Danvers, December 10, 2019, prepared by the Moore &amp; Cameron Group, Inc., 66 Elm Street, Danvers. This approval is approved with the following waivers. One, Section 4.8.5 and Section 4.8.6, proposed layout plan and landscaping plan, require a layout plan and a landscape plan. Requested, the information required on the proposed layout plan and landscape plan be added to the layout and material plan, Sheet C3. Section 4.8.7 and Section 4.8.8, utility plan and grading and drainage stormwater plan, required a utility plan and a grading plan, excuse me, and a drainage stormwater plan. Requested, this information required on the utility plan and grading and drainage plan is added to the grading and utilities plan, Sheet C4. Section 4.10.2, site landscape and minimum total square footage of landscape area, required the minimum total square footage of landscape area to ensure the above criteria met is 30 percent of the total impervious surface of the proposed development, except where otherwise reduced in the zoning bylaw. This calculated square footage of landscaping area shall be based upon definition as contained in Section 40. Requested, the landscape area total less than 30 percent of the proposed impervious area. Section 4.10.2C2, site landscaping, landscaped area requirement, required the 30 percent landscape area requirement shall consist of a foundation planting, streetscape, and parking lot area. Requested, landscaping and screening is provided, but not all of it meets the dimensions and quantities described. Section 4.10.23, site landscaping, landscape buffer alongside and rear property lines, required landscape buffer of at least five feet in width shall be provided along the side and rear property lines or within the required setback to any abutting residential property. Requested, a five-foot landscape buffer along the side and rear property lines are not proposed. Any approval of this site plan shall lapse within two years from the grant thereof if construction has not begun on such date except for good cause. Once begun, the improvements detailed in this decision must be completed within two years unless extended by mutual agreement. This approval is also subject to the attached list of general conditions approved by the planning board on January 27, 2004, and amended through February 27, 2018, which are incorporated in the Certificate of Action by reference.
Can we read all the general conditions? Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have 37 Pope's Lane, 85 Newbury Street. Ms. McCann?
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight is Katie Cruz, the project engineer, as well as Dean Souza, the D Louigi Foods. And we presented to you the full application at your last meeting with regard to an addition being added to the existing D Louigi processing facility and the addition of the new lot area next door to the existing facility for purposes of providing needed warehouse space for the D Louigi processing facility. No new employees are being proposed, no new vehicle trips into the site are proposed, just circulation within the existing facility to the new facility. And we reviewed that with you at the last meeting. We are seeking site plan approval as well as special permit with regard to three-dimensional aspects of the plan. At the end of the hearing, we left with a couple of things that we needed to do. Number one, we needed to respond to the engineering department comments that we had received, which we didn't have time to respond to from the last meeting. We have done that, and you should have in your packages, a final review letter from the town engineering department indicating that we have responded satisfactorily to all of their questions and comments. And the other item we were asked to do is to look at landscaping and could we add any additional landscaping to the site? And we did that. We took a very hard and serious look at the site and where we could add some landscaping. And I'll have Katie go over that with you. But we are adding about 1,900 square feet of landscaping to the site, which is really good, I think, and 67 new plantings, including trees as well as shrubs. So I'll ask Katie to point those out to you. And I think we've done a good job addressing that and placing the landscaping in areas that are visible and to get the most bang for the buck when we were adding landscaping to this particular site.
So I'll start in the back of the site. I know the board asked that we provide some screenings for the condensers and generators proposed in the back of the building. And we've provided a series of arborvitae along the back of the paved area, along there at the bottom of the red carpet, which will serve to kind of screen the slope from the street as well as screening the condensers and generators from the abutting properties. So we've provided arborvitae along the condensers and generators along the back here and surrounding the propane can enclosure and the parking area along here. The next change we made was to rotate these three parking spaces here that used to be parallel to the parking line, now they're parallel to the building, so we've added a little bit more landscaped area in this corner. And then I think the biggest change is we eliminated seven of the proposed parking spaces in the front of the building or along here and to be along this side, and replaced them with landscaping.
We had initially proposed 20 new parking spaces with no new employees, and that was it discussed at our last meeting. Could we do something with some of those parking spaces to provide the additional landscaping? And as Katie pointed out, that's what we've done. So we're providing 13 new parking spaces rather than 20 and no new employees. Our landscaping includes eight azaleas, eight rhododendrons, six red maples, and in this area here, as Katie pointed out, the arborvitae are 45 arborvitae. So I think hopefully you will find that we addressed the items that the board was supposed to address. Do you have to answer any questions?
Thank you. I'm going to put it out to the board. Jim?
No, I'm satisfied.
Okay.
I'm fine with the landscaping as proposed and the changes they've made. And I read the engineering letter, and he does acknowledge that there will be waivers that are needed, but he, I believe, found everything acceptable.
Nathaniel?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Charles?
No, I'm satisfied.
John?
Same with me. Appreciate the accommodation.
Would you like the change? I think it'll actually slow down the movement of traffic when you have those bump outs in there, a little bit around there. Not that traffic's really going to be that much of an issue, just you won't have cars lying around flipping around, but you're going to have, you're going to have that, isn't there a, you've got a small truck that's going to be going back and forth in there to move meat in and out. All right. Other than that, I think it's a nice change. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open up to the audience. Does anyone in the audience have any questions for the applicant? Comments, questions, anyone? Hearing none. I'm bringing it back to the board. I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Oh, let's give this to Charles. It's two, actually. We have a multiple vote. So we have a special permit and we have a site plan. Is there an order that it should be done in?
Yeah, the special permit should be first.
Okay. Special permit first.
Which is on top.
Special permit, 37 Pope's Lane and 85 Newbury Street. We, the Danvers Planning Board, having been requested under Section 7.4 of the zoning bylaw, a special permit submitted by TAKJ LLC for property located at 37 Pope's Lane, assessors map 48, lot 28, and 85 Newbury Street, assessors map 48, lot 28B, in the Highway Corridor District to demolish the existing cement building at 37 Pope's Lane and construct a new two-story building addition containing 25,897 square feet that will physically connect to the existing building as shown on the following plans. Permit site plan set 37 and 41 Pope's Lane, map 48, lots 28 and 28B, Danvers, Massachusetts, prepared for D Louigis, Inc. by Hancock Associates, 185 Center Street, Danvers, Massachusetts, consisting of 10 sheets dated December 6, 2019 through January 22, 2020, including the title sheet, existing conditions plan, zoning analysis plan, site preparation and erosion control plan, layout and materials plan, grading and utilities plan, landscaping plan, site details, additional site details, lighting layout, elevation plans, proposed building, excuse me, elevation plans for the proposed building at 37 Pope's Lane, Danvers, Massachusetts, consisting of two pages, Sheet A 2.1 and Sheet A 2.2, prepared by Chu and Company, Inc., 1 Billings Road, Quincy, Massachusetts. Supplemental documents include the stormwater report, December 2019, revised January 2020, prepared by Hancock Associates, 185 Center Street, Danvers, Massachusetts. The applicant is requesting relief from the following dimensional requirements. A, the maximum lot coverage in the Highway Corridor Zoning District is 70 percent with restaurants and retail uses having an impervious lot coverage maximum of 80 percent. Given the existing lot coverage of the site of approximately 79 percent and the need to create a cohesive development with the addition of the newly acquired parcel and match the existing building for design purposes, the applicant is requesting a special permit to allow the percentage of impervious lot coverage to be 84 percent. B, the applicant is requesting a special permit to allow a side setback adjacent to the pedestrian entrance to be 24 feet rather than 25 feet to accommodate the entrance platform. The building addition itself complies with all the dimensional requirements. C, the applicant is requesting a special permit to allow a rear setback of 24 feet rather than 25 feet to accommodate the roof eve overhang. The board finds that pursuant to Section 7.4 of the zoning bylaws, reductions to dimensional requirements, this application is in accordance with the following criteria. A, there is some, excuse me, there is some difficulty in developing the lot, which cannot be overcome without a reduction in the dimensional requirements or a site design is proposed which is more suitable for the lot than one which would be allowed under the permitted dimensional requirements. B, adjacent properties would not be adversely impacted and... C, the reduced dimensions would not be detrimental to the public good and would not substantially deviate from the intent or purpose of this bylaw. D, requirements and lots reduced under this section shall not be further reduced or subdivided. Prior to the issuance of a Burt Building Permit, this special permit certificate of action shall be recorded at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds along with the site plan approval certification of action. This special permit is subject to the following conditions. Any approval of this special permit shall lapse within three years from the grant thereof if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. The proposed development shall also be subject to site plan approval, signed on January 28, 2019.
I have a motion on the special permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. And now we move on to the site plan.
Okay. Site plan approval, 37 Pope's Lane and 85 Newbury Street. This is to certify that a meeting, that at a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on January 28, 2020, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted, we, the Danvers Planning Board, having been requested under Section 4 of the zoning bylaw, to approve a site plan submitted by TAKJ LLC for property located at 37 Pope's Lane, assessors map 48, lots 28, and 85 Newbury Street, assessors map 48, lot 28B, in the Highway Corridor District to demolish the existing cement building at 37 Pope's Lane and construct a new two-story building addition containing 25,897 square feet that will physically connect to the existing building as shown on the following plans. Permit site plan, 37 and 41 Pope's Lane, map 48, lots 28 and 28B, Danvers, Massachusetts, prepared by D Louigis, Inc., prepared for D Louigis, Inc. by Hancock Associates, 185 Center Street, Danvers, Massachusetts, consisting of 10 sheets dated September 6, 2019, and revised through January 22, 2020. C1, title sheet, EC, existing conditions plan. C2, zoning analysis plan. C3, site preparation and erosion control plan. C4, layout and materials plan. C5, grading and utilities plan. C6, landscaping plan. C7, site details. C8, site details, lighting layout. Elevation plans, proposed building at 37 Pope's Lane, Danvers, Massachusetts, consisting of two pages, Sheet A 2.1 and A 2.2, prepared by Chu and Company, Inc., 1 Billings Road, Quincy, Massachusetts. Supplemental documents being the stormwater report, December 20, excuse me, December 2019, revised January 2020, prepared by Hancock Associates, 185 Center Street, Danvers, Massachusetts. This project is subject to the following conditions. One, in accordance with Section 4.8.8.D of the Danvers zoning bylaw, this project must conform to the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy standards. The SMP states that a redevelopment project must meet the SMP standards only to the maximum extent predict practicable and must improve existing conditions. Two, the Danvers water and sewer permit will need to be applied for prior to performing any installation or relocation of the existing services or mains. Four, any approval of this site plan shall lapse within two years from the grant thereof if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. Once begun, the improvements detailed in the decision must be completed within two years unless extended by a mutual agreement. The following waivers from Section 4 of the zoning bylaw have been approved. One, Section 4.8, application requirements. Required, site plans for both 37 Pope's Lane and 85 Newbury Street. Requested, plan set shows the entirety of 37 Pope's Lane and that portion of 85 Newbury Street where work is proposed for the addition connection. Each sheet does not show both properties. Two, Section 4.8.7 and Section 4.8.8, utility plan and grading and drainage stormwater plan. Required, a utility plan and grading and drainage stormwater plan. Requested, the information required on the utility plan and grading and drainage plan is added to the grading and utilities plan, Sheet C5, information combined onto one sheet. Three, Section 4.8.6, landscape plan. Required, landscape plan, to be prepared by a landscape architect for projects that exceed 20,000 square feet. Requested, the landscape plan is prepared by a project civil engineer rather than a landscape architect. Four, Section 4.8.4.B, existing conditions plan. Required, onsite and abutting lot lines. Requested, lot lines for the entirety of 37 Pope's Lane are shown on the existing conditions plan. Five, Section 4.8.5.B, proposed layout plan. Required, onsite and abutting lot lines. Requested, 85 Newbury Street parcel is not shown on the existing conditions plan but is shown on the zoning analysis sheet. Six, Section 4.10.2.C2A, site landscaping, landscaped areas requirement. Required, foundation plantings, a three-foot wide landscaping strip along the entire length of a building's foundation except at points of entry and exit and loading and receiving areas within view from the street and parking lot. Requested, the three-foot wide foundation landscape strip is not shown around the entirety of the new building to accommodate the loading dock, vehicular access, and utility condensers. Seven, Section 4.10.1.G, width of access drives and parking aisles. Required, all access drives and parking lot aisles for two-way traffic shall have a minimum width of 24 feet. Requested, a small section of the access aisle to the side and rear of the new addition narrows to 21 feet rather than the required 24 feet. Access to the side and rear of the building will be limited, will be for limited employee-passenger vehicle access only and will be adequate. Eight, Section 4.10.2.C1, site landscaping, minimum total square footage of landscaped area. Required, the minimum total square footage of landscaped area to ensure the above criteria are met is 30 percent of the total impervious surface of the proposed development, except where otherwise reduced in this zoning bylaw. This calculated square footage of landscaped area shall be based upon the definition as contained in Section 40. Requested, in conjunction with the special permit relative to maximum impervious lot coverage, a 30 percent waiver is requested of impervious landscaping requirements. Nine, Section 4.9, community impact assessment. Required, for structures in excess of 20,000... Required: For structures in excess of 20,000 square feet and all projects that include a drive-through, a community impact assessment, or CIA, shall be submitted. The CIA shall be prepared by an interdisciplinary team having expertise in civil engineering and traffic and transportation engineering. The CIA shall include the following components. One, Traffic Impact Analysis, traffic study. Two, Visual Impact Assessment. Three, Stormwater Management Plan in lieu of Section 4.8.8. Four, Erosion and Sediment Control Plan. Requested: Although the new building exceeds 20,000 square feet, the applicant requests a waiver from the requirement of the community impact assessment. The building addition is an expansion of the existing DeLuigi facility and not visible from Route 1 and Newbury Street, therefore, a visual impact assessment for this addition is not appropriate. The applicant explained that no new employees and only five to six trucks per day are anticipated at the new loading dock, therefore, a traffic impact analysis is not necessary. Stormwater management and erosion and sediment control are provided by the project engineer with this application. Ten, Section 4.10.1B Off-Street Parking Standards Specific Provisions. Required: The following required parking ratios are presumed appropriate for development within the town of Danvers. Where in the opinion of the applicant, a listed ratio requires too much or too little parking, the applicant may provide an alternate parking plan with data submitted by the applicant in support of higher or lower ratios. Requested: The applicant explained that no new employees and no new vehicle trips are proposed as a result of the addition. The property will have 13 new parking spaces. This approval is also subject to the attached list of general conditions approved by the Planning Board on January 27th, 2004, as amended through February 27th, 2018, which are incorporated in this Certificate of Action by reference.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
You were leaving too soon. I had to give you one.
I know.
Next, we have public hearings. We have a major modification in front of us. I'm going to open the public notice and then the applicant can come up. Notice is hereby given that the Danvers Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Toomey Room, Danvers Town Hall, 1 Sylvan Street on Tuesday, January 28th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. relative to a request for a major modification to an approved site plan submitted by Abimad Inc. for property at 18 through 22 Cherry Hill Drive, Map 29, Lot 4, pursuant to Section 4 of the zoning bylaw. Property is in industrial 2 zone. The applicant is proposing the removal and relocation of an existing transformer in the rear parking lot along the install, along with installation of a new 2-megawatt generator, new powerhouse structure, and associated electrical utility infrastructure improvements associated with these modifications. Copies of the application and plans are on file and available for public review in the Land Use and Community Services Department, Danvers Town Hall, and on the town's website. The floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Antonio Moore. I'm a civil engineer with Stantec Consulting. I'm here on behalf of Abimad this evening. As we just mentioned, we're here to present a major modification to a previously approved site plan at their current facility on Cherry Hill Drive. We've been here several times in the past for various modifications, additional parking areas and site landscaping and the like. This is a much smaller effort, just sort of overall square footage. The project entails, right here in the rear service area of the building, there is an existing transformer that will be removed and relocated to make room for a new generator located in this area here, and a new powerhouse structure. The generator is a 2-megawatt generator that's really needed for emergency backup power for Abimad's current building operations. The powerhouse structure houses critical electrical components that essentially are tied in with the generator itself and feed the building. So there'll be an enclosure around the generator and as well as a powerhouse, sort of a pre-fabricated structure that will be delivered to the site and installed on concrete pads, as shown on the site plan. The plan right now is to actually install three separate pads, one for the generator, enclosure, and spares, one pad for the powerhouse, and then obviously the transformer pad itself. The area is located within their existing loading dock, so it's essentially an active loading area, and we're trying to fit these in between two active loading doors, so that's what is located right now that would function with the current building operations and be able to service Abimad hopefully for quite some time. No increase in the previous area, the sites currently all paved. We will be saw cutting, pavement, and installing even around these concrete pads, we'll be installing bollards to protect the critical infrastructure, and we'll be installing underground conduits to each connect the transformer, the powerhouse, the generator in the building, and also a small little saw cut that will connect back into the main power feeding the site. We have submitted this application to the town departments. We've gotten a few comments back. We responded to those via email late last week, and I don't know if you've received them. I can go over them in more detail if you'd like, or I can open the floor of questions for you.
I'll put it out to the board first, and we can come back. John?
Well, just there was a couple of comments from the planning staff around potential some vegetation around that particular area to soften some of the sound. Did you get that comment?
We did, we did. And it's really, it's a service area, so planting vegetation is really, this is not practical and really just wouldn't fit. It's an active loading dock, so the location of these structures were located in between two active loading docks, and so to install plantings in addition to the bollards, it would, just it wouldn't all fit, and the plants just probably wouldn't survive. So it's just not practical to install plantings. The issue is sound attenuation, that the sound that will be attenuated by an enclosure structure that's included in the response packet, and we have our electrical engineers here who can speak more about sound attenuation qualities if you'd like, but essentially what we're being told is that the enclosure itself will reduce decibel levels to that equivalent of a commercial lawnmower.
So...
At the distance of a bus, seven meters.
So the new system, is it less decibels than what's currently out there now?
It's basically equivalent.
Okay. And I assume this is for backup purposes, but for disaster recovery, do you test it periodically?
Yeah, there'll be a weekly, or I'm not sure what the frequency of the, if it's weekly or if it's monthly.
Weekly.
Maintenance period, where they've tested to make sure that it's functioning, so that when it actually is needed, we know that it'll function.
Right.
We submitted details for the belly tank, that was one of the comments from the engineer. I don't believe the building department had any comments, and I don't believe the fire department had any comments as well, so I believe those were the, if they could cover all of the comments that were mentioned. Is any other questions?
John, do you want to expand?
Well, the last, yeah, well, I guess the last comment that I'm reading here is around lighting. Is there any exterior lighting being installed with this project?
Yeah, the only exterior lighting is the generator themselves is required to have a one light by code. There's a door upstairs, and it's just a, it's typical to any egress door you'd have in a building would have a building-mounted light for safety. It's a code requirement. It's a small little LED light, won't generate a lot of light pollution, it's just a small LED light that's required by code. That's the only lighting that can be installed.
I'm satisfied. Bill?
Charles?
No, no further questions.
Nathaniel?
You have an existing generator now.
Correct.
And it's tested weekly, I assume?
I'll have to defer to Mike's.
So the only difference is it's just an increase in size of it, so it's got greater capacity to accommodate your needs.
Correct.
And the sound decibels are essentially the same as what you have now.
That's correct.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Jim?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I'm fine also.
I don't have any further questions. I'm going to bring it up to, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience having comments, questions? It's Bradstreet.
Phil Bradstreet, Tommy, you may have a brief of one. You check the generator during the week, is that during normal business hours? You don't do it at 10 o'clock at night because we've had, I know what you're saying about it, the sound, but we've had other areas in town where they've checked their generators at odd hours and it's disturbed because at night perhaps the sound carries as opposed to during the day when there's normal business noise or activity. So my question was, if it's done weekly, when is it done? During the day?
Sir, yeah, if you wouldn't mind using the microphone, please, just let us know who you are.
This is Mike Hood from Abimad.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, we can set the schedule, everybody, it's scheduled to does a test run every Monday morning at 8:00 a.m. during normal operation hours.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else from the audience? Hearing none, I'm bringing it back to the, to the board. Any further comments before we close the public hearing? Nope. Then I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Opposed? And... I'll give this one to you.
This is to certify that a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on January 28th, 2020, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted, "We, the Danvers Planning Board, have been requested under Section 4 of the zoning bylaw to approve a major modification to an approved site plan for the property located at 18-22 Cherry Hill Drive, Assessors Map 29, Lot 4, do hereby vote to approve the application submitted by Abimad Inc. to modify the previously approved site plan. This approval authorizes the removal and installation of a new 2-megawatt generator, new powerhouse structure, and associated electrical utility infrastructure improvements associated with these modifications. All these changes are shown on the following plans. Plans Phase 8C Major Modification to Site Plan, Abimad, 22 Cherry Hill Drive, Danvers, Mass. December 20, 2019, Project Number 218420707, prepared by Stantec Consulting, Boston, Mass. Plans, eight sheets dated December 20, 2019, sheets as described herein. This project is subject to the following condition. This approval is also subject to the attached list of general conditions approved by the Planning Board on January 27th, 2004, amended through February 27th, 2018, which are incorporated in this Certificate of Action by reference. Any approval of this site plan shall lapse within two years from the grant thereof if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause."
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next, we have other matters. We have downtown corridor update in front of us from staff after Finance Committee was nice enough to have their meeting on the same time as our meeting last time. I was able to attend the very end of it, though, which was, I thought it was received very well from FinCom. They really were only discussing the change that's in front of us associated with the... Oh, God, what I, I lost the word.
Affordable housing?
Yes. And they wanted to structure it a little bit better so that it didn't, it didn't hurt people who were single-family homeowners as opposed to businesses or applicants that were making larger changes to their site. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. David Fields, Planning Director, you have it pretty much correct. The exact wording is on page 119 of the current, of the proposed bylaw, it was in your packet. Essentially, they want to exempt detached, single-family homes within the district from paying into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which no one seemed to have any objection to at the time. So it was really just an update to you all that that was the FinCom's only change with the entirety of the bylaw.
Any questions from the board? For David? John?
Not I, nope.
Charles?
No.
Nathaniel?
No, was, yes, was it, was that the letter that was in the packet? Not the letter, that, that one page that had the chart with the different note?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Jim?
Detached, single-family homes? Are you saying if you have more than one house on a lot, can you, you mean just a single-family home is exempt from this?
Correct. So if you had a detached, single-family home and wanted to add an additional unit, not an EFLA, not an ADU, you would be exempt from paying into the fund. So if you, if you had anything above that, a duplex, a triplex, a quad, anything, and adding an additional unit, you'd have to pay, but they thought it was fitting to, in case that you wanted to add an additional unit for somebody else in your family but didn't want to abide by the EFLA rules, which I think limits size of the structure, so...
But don't they kick in at the fifth unit anyway?
Yeah.
You have to have five units before, not EFLA, but before the Affordable Housing requirements kick in.
In the inclusionary bylaw, that's on the books townwide, yes. This is just for downtown. So it kicks in at five everywhere else, any other project that you do, we were mixing it up a little bit to say any net new unit, you'd have to pay into the fund. So it's a bit different from the existing one, so the existing one takes into account existing units on the lot. So if you had four and added a fifth, you'd be subject to it. Where in this current iteration, if you had four and added one, you'd only be subject to the additional one unit, not the entirety of all the existing units on site. Does that make sense?
No.
It's a net, the net, right?
It's a, yeah, it's a net new charge. So it doesn't, essentially, you're not charged a fee for units already existing on the site. It's only above and beyond what's currently there.
But in our regular inclusionary, you are.
Correct, but only, only at five units.
Right, but if someone, if you have an existing house on a lot and you decide to build four additional condos.
Yep.
That house is now included?
Yes, townwide, yep.
Townwide?
Correct.
Okay, but in this...
But in the downtown geographic area that we're talking about, this is, that's what this, this we're taking.
Yeah, this scheme is just laid out just for downtown.
So if there's a single-family home and someone wants to expand and put in, say, four units?
They would have to, they would have to pay into the fund.
They would have to pay in, so it's really the same guidelines.
Actually, on this schedule, they'd owe us a single-family unit.
But are there any, are there any, if you look at the zoning area, are there any...
Not many.
That would actually be able to do that?
Not many. There's, there's a few, single-family detached that are in the district. We didn't run the analysis to see if the lots are large enough to see if they could actually add full unit.
Because you would need, you probably need at least 20,000 square feet, or more.
Yeah.
Which, you're not going to find that, I don't think.
As I said, of the existing stock, there's very few detached, single-family in the district, and of those, I'm not exactly sure how many could expand. I would imagine the number is very few, if any at all.
Even 30 if you go into five units.
Yeah.
I mean, it's probably a moot point, like you're saying, Jim, but it's...
Yeah.
I think it was just precautionary to make sure that somebody who had a single-family home didn't avoid a change to their land so that they, because they felt they would...
But they need to have a four-family home, really, and then add to a unit.
True.
Add four units to a single family.
True.
Maybe someone? Yeah, they go up...
It doesn't, but it doesn't change...
Four levels, I guess.
It doesn't change anything to do with what, what's going on downtown anyways.
Okay.
It just, it creates another level of security for the single-family homeowner.
And it's similar to our inclusionary zoning bylaw anyway.
Right. I mean, the idea of the inclusionary bylaw wasn't, wasn't to go after single-family homeowners that were just expanding, as long as they didn't go be on a certain level.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Beg, anything else?
No, no, I understand it now. I was a little confused there for a moment.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Yeah, they did get kind of in-depth in it when Mike brought it up.
It took a while, yeah. It was a lengthy conversation.
They went back and forth a couple times before they finally came up with the wording that they wanted to go with.
Yeah.
But I think it was, it was good that they had a former Planning Board member on the, on the board with Mike, with Mike...
Landers.
Landers, yeah, who's on it, and he was helping out.
Good.
So, Alice, is that it?
That's, that's it.
Okay.
For that item.
Unless there's something else, we can move on to the next agenda item.
Do we need to vote on, do we need to vote on that last one?
I don't think so, because that's FinCom made it, that's what FinCom's bringing in front of town meeting.
Yeah, so essentially, it's their, if they're the warrant review committee, it's their recommendation to town meeting that gets the vote, which was recommended to them by you.
So don't they come back to us, or no?
They do not in the process that we are currently using.
Okay.
No, this is...
So they're not coming back again? Gotcha.
No, this is set up for straight to go to town meeting now with what we have.
But previously, they...
I don't think they did.
I think we've, what used to happen was it, it went from us to Board of Selectmen, back to us, and then to FinCom. And then FinCom would vote on it, and it went to town meeting. I think it's a slight change, but after it goes through FinCom and they vote on it, it's on town meeting floor. They're, they're voting on what FinCom is voting on. That's what town meeting does.
Yeah, I thought previously if there were changes that they suggested and we would have to, it was an opportunity to amend the bylaw that they would run it before us. it was an opportunity to amend the bylaw that they would run it before us.
There were times we had last-minute meetings just before town meeting.
Before the final version went out, but I'm fine with it.
Okay. Anything else before I move forward?
I've gotten a request for pastries and danishes at the Saturday workshop.
We have requests. Okay. So there's requests for.
I'll be sure to pass that along.
Yes. I know there's some people in the audience who are very excited about.
Yes.
He just made it, I noticed that he just marked it down in his calendar that he's going to be there now.
Saturday workshop for, announce that, Bill.
So I guess that's what we're talking about now with the future dates, is we have a workshop on this Saturday.
Correct.
This Saturday, okay.
Yeah. A couple of things I just wanted to go over with you all while everybody's here. For those of you who don't know, so I started actually looking at the calendar after this town meeting, because we're going to have to start preparing for that one right after this one's finished, for better or worse. So we had a zoning request on the books that has been pushed, I think, from last town meeting to the fall, and then now pushed again. So at annual town meeting, we'll have a bylaw on, up for proposal to allow animal husbandry in all three single-family residential districts, so R1, R2, and R3. Currently, it's only allowed in R2, which there's various contingents in town. I think that doesn't necessarily make sense for various reasons. Because it's part of the zoning bylaw, it would have to involve the Planning Board going forward. So just wanted to give that background. As a heads up to that, most of what would be happening is the Board of Health wants to institute regulations around animal husbandry, which to us at the staff level makes a lot more sense rather than having it in the zoning bylaw. Frankly, I don't know about keeping livestock. I don't know if any of you do, but the, the idea would be to take it out of the zoning bylaw for the most part, just, just the enabling portion of it, leave it in the bylaw to say you can do it. Then everything else regulating it would be involved with the Board of Health. So you'd have to go to them for permitting, explain your stockade or whatever it is, keeping scheme and feed scheme, and then they would.
So are we talking about moving in and out of the zoning bylaw and putting into the town bylaws in general?
Wouldn't even be in the general bylaw. It would be a Board of Health regulation. So the permit would be issued by them, but it would be under strictly the Board of Health regs. So the zoning bylaw would say, you know, depending on what town meeting does, it's allowed in Res 1, 2, and 3, and that's pretty much it. So right now, they give specifics on how many animals you can keep in the zoning bylaw, how, how much they can weigh, so.
I know we struggled with it in the past when we've had stuff like this in front of us, yeah.
Yeah. So there'll be probably a couple of options on the table once we move forward a little bit further. So, but with that background, the future dates encompassing this town meeting and then annual town meeting, we have the Town Meeting Member Workshop on Saturday. Town meeting itself for the downtown zoning, or at least as far as we're concerned, is February 10. The Board of Health will review and discuss those regulations I just talked about on the 6th of February. So we should know before this town meeting, one way or the other, how they're leaning, what their regs look like, and how on the zoning side, we can proceed forward. So after that, it would be distribution of materials to Planning Board on March 10. And from there, we can start preparing for the annual town meeting after that, depending on, you know, what the board thinks.
Who, who in the board is going to be able to attend the meeting this weekend?
I'll try.
I'm going to try to. So what time is it set again?
Starts at 9:00, goes till whenever, hopefully doesn't go past noon, but we'll see.
I will not be able to attend. I, I'm, yeah, my daughter has her final swim meet this year, and I will be in a bigger doghouse if I do not make that as opposed to making this. So I won't be able to make it that one.
Okay.
As long as we have some representation here, that'd be great.
But I don't understand what we're preparing for, for the annual town meeting. So that the annual town meeting in May.
Correct.
Okay?
Yep.
So we're looking at just changing, a warrant to change the zoning bylaw to put the animal husbandry in all three districts, and that's it? And then the Board of Health will take over. So how much preparation do we need for that?
Honestly, it shouldn't be much. It's a very, very easy lift for the Planning Board. Frankly, because of 40A, the Planning Board has to put forward the motion should they choose to do that. But other than that, the, the language in the text is going to be a paragraph. So it's very, very simple, really just getting animal husbandry away from the land use piece of it, more towards health regulations.
And I think it should be there. I think we tried to do that at one town meeting, didn't we? Wasn't that a warrant we had, a chicken warrant?
Yeah, we've had, we've had a couple of different things in front of us about that crossed the line between animal husbandry and, and just.
And Board of Health, having Board of Health taking over.
When you say animal husbandry, can you define that term?
There is a definition in our existing bylaw. I don't know it off the top of my head, but essentially, the keep, the keeping of any animals, chickens, rabbits, all the way up to horses.
What about dogs?
Does not include dogs or common household pets.
Because we have, obviously, kennels, dog training facilities that come in front of us, and kennels are a part of our bylaw, so.
Those would, those would stay.
Those will remain.
Those would stay, yeah. The definition section is fairly specific. I believe the Building Commissioner has already drafted something that he'd like included, which includes the various types of poultry listed out.
I, sorry, I have the zoning bylaw in front of me. I could read the definition. That's okay.
Sure.
So animal husbandry, residential, the raising and keeping of animals as an accessory use to a single-family dwelling where all accessory uses, such as barns, pens, cages, water, feeding stations, and waste storage disposal areas, should be located at least 15 feet from inner budding residential lot line by right. Small animals less than 15 pounds, including but not limited to ducks, geese, pigeons, chickens, and rabbits, provided that the total number of animals does not exceed 15 on lots 20,000 square feet or smaller on lots larger than 20,000 square feet. One additional animal is allowed for each 2,000 square feet beyond the initial 20,000 square feet. A special permit, the total number of animals exceeds 15 larger animals more than 15 pounds, including but not limited to cows, pigs, sheeps, turkeys, and goats. So.
Get those goats now, Bill.
So it does exempt.
I think that would move this.
It does exempt dogs and cats, so.
Okay.
Kennels will still stay kennels, and then everything else will go to Board of Health.
It wouldn't affect a kennel, no.
Get the pigs.
Anything else?
Do we want to talk about the February 11 meeting?
Anything to bring up about that?
Yep. So looking at the schedule, we don't actually have any active applications that would be before us on February 11. So at the staff level, we were thinking of not holding the meeting. Obviously, we can if you'd all like to meet and see our smiling faces, but I'm going to take it that we can wait till the 25th to meet again of February.
I agree with that. Sounds good.
Given that town meeting's on February 10.
Right.
To meet the night after is probably not necessary.
Our audience members might be upset that we're not having a meeting, but, yeah.
They're getting pastries, so, you know.
Well, we don't have it on a normal meeting, so, yeah. We should, yeah, have a, have a big spread here, yeah.
For the taxpayers would love that.
Not too big.